Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, April 4, 2017. If you would please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
Thank you. First item on our agenda this evening is to adopt this evening's agenda.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Any changes or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. We don't have any proclamations or presentations, and we're up to the approval of the March 21 council meeting minutes.
Your honor. I make a motion to approve the March 21, 2017 council meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Grischoviac. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And those are approved. We have three items on our consent agenda this evening. The first one is to announce our 2017 summer concert schedule. The Arts Commission would like to announce their 2017 Thursday nights live at the Dam Summer Series, which will feature the following eight performers. June 8, Ecuador Monta, the Latin fusion band. June 15 is Hitchville Country. June 22 is the Castaways. I'm going to keep saying what the 60s rock, so that then I can say June 29, the Polka Beats are playing polka music. July 13 is the Zing Rays, which is 50s, 60s, and 70s vintage rock. July 20 is the Backyard Band's Variety. July 27, Lachlan Road Celtic. And August 3 is the Church of Cash, the Johnny Cash tribute band. All performances begin at 7:00 at the Performance Pavilion at the Coon Rapids Dam Regional Park, and the concerts are offered at no charge to the community. And Inoka County has once agreed, once again, agreed to waive the parking fee during this evening's. The Parks Commission would like to recognize the assistance of the Inoka County Parks and Recreation Department's managers and other staff in presenting these series. And a local Boy Scout troop will sell popcorn, candy, soda, and water during the concerts. And the North Star Lions Club will be selling food items such as hamburgers, hot dogs, and brats.
And walking tacos, right?
All right. The Arts Commission appreciates the opportunity to continue presenting this series to the community. So, let's see, in addition to being available at City Hall, the 2017 schedule has been distributed via utility bill mailings and will be in the city newsletter and on the website. The next item on our agenda is to adopt resolutions 1745 and 1746. It's a Sustainability Commission appointment and a Planning Commission appointment. There is an open seat on the Sustainability Commission, and the Sustainability Commission and city staff would like to appoint a new member to the commission. Is it Shauna or Shayna? Shauna, and if I did this wrong, I apologize. Shauna Bush has applied and interviewed for the open seat, and the commission feels she is a strong candidate and would be a great addition to the Sustainability Commission. And then Denise Haush has submitted her notice of resignation from the Planning Commission effective May 31, 2017. So a committee consisting of city staff and council members interviewed three candidates for the open Planning Commission seat and has recommended appointment of Don Heikala to the Planning Commission. So we're looking at adopting resolutions 1745 and 1746. And the last item on the consent agenda is to approve final payment for Project 15-15, Northdale Boulevard and Redwood Street signalization. There were just some changes to the project for additional aggregate base and excavation, a bituminous patch for a portion of the road, and to regrade a portion of the Boulevard area. The actual project costs were less than the final contract amount due to quantity adjustments from the original bid. So the staff recommends approval of change orders and final payment to Valley Paving Incorporated in the amount of $9,358.18 for Project 15-15, Northdale Boulevard and Redwood Street signalization. And that, I believe, is it for our consent agenda. Your honor. Councilmember Wells.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Wells, second by Geisler. Any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the consent agenda is adopted. Skipping right up to new business. The first thing on our agenda is Agenda Item 5. Consider resolution of, consider approval of Resolution 17-42, approving a lot split, 10437 J Street, Tom Stannich. The applicant is proposing to subdivide a 19,357 square foot parcel, .44 acres, into two lots. Mr. Harlecker, did you want to present on this, or do you want me to just read your notes here?
No, it's up to council.
Okay.
I've got a PowerPoint set up if you want a presentation.
Okay. Council, does anybody want a presentation on this?
I don't need one.
It seems pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward. There is an existing residence on parcel A. The residents will comply with the new lot line setback following the lot split. There are three existing non-conforming detached sheds on the property. They do not meet setback requirements. The applicant will be required to remove the one on parcel B and move the two on parcel A so that they meet setback requirements. The existing lot is 129 feet deep and 150 feet wide, in far more detail than I probably need to go into. So let's just say the proposed lot split requires a variance to the minimum lot depth requirement. Both lots are 129 feet deep, and the code requires a minimum lot of 135 feet. This lot was platted as part of Forest Park in 1923, prior to minimum lot depth requirements. And the plat shows the lots as 130.5 feet deep with a 14-foot alley in the rear. Do we have any alleys in Coon Rapids that we use? I don't think so.
Only a couple, and that's probably why it's a shorter lot.
The proposed lot split requires a variance to the minimum lot width requirement. Both lots are 75 feet wide. The minimum lot width requirement is 80 feet. Forest Park, again platted in 1923, was platted as 25-foot wide lots, and a builder could purchase as many 25-foot wide lots as they needed. There is a wide range of lot widths within the two block area of this neighborhood, and they're ranging in width from 75 to 175 feet. There are 13 lots within the two subdivision blocks that are 75 feet wide. So the proposed lots are 9,684 square feet and 9,673 square feet. The minimum lot requirement is, lot area requirement is 10,800. There's a wide range in lot size within the area. They range in size from 19.5 to 9,700, and there are 13 lots that are less than the required 10,800 square feet. So at the Planning Commission meeting held on March 16, one resident spoke at the public hearing. He asked about rear yard setback requirements and tree removal. The Planning Commission voted 5 to nothing to recommend approval of the lot split and variances. Probably a lot more detail than I needed to read. Council?
My only question for staff is, in that neighborhood, there are a couple of blocks that actually have these alleys that are kind of part of the layout. Have we ever given any thought to vacating them? Because we don't even have a curb cut for anybody to, you know, use that alleyway, and they're pretty much treated as people's backyards. We, it's not a high importance agenda item, I can tell you that, but...
When we explored it in one area town, and the title issues and things like that became difficult, because I think there's also easements back there as well, utilities and things like that. So we do look at it occasionally, and I think one time we were able to work around it without vacating it, and this is how we're sort of working around here too, by granting that variance as well.
If we're ever calculating setbacks there, I would hope we would take into consideration that we've never actually developed it into an alleyway, but I'm certainly willing to support this lot split. Thank you.
Councilor Johnson, was that a motion of some sort?
I'll make the motion then. I move to approve the lot split in this agenda item.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Wells. The recommendation, in planning case 17-2, the Planning Commission recommended the City Council approve Resolution 17-42, approving the proposed lot split and the variances to minimum lot width, depth, and area requirements with the following conditions. One, all comments, all comments of the city engineer must be addressed. Two, compliance with Title 11 Land Development Regulations. Three, park dedication for the two lots be paid in the amount of $2,000 per lot, $4,000 prior to releasing the lot split for recording. And four, the shed on parcel B be removed, and the two sheds on parcel A be moved so they comply with setback requirements prior to releasing the lot split for recording.
If you need me to articulate it on the record, my motion includes all those conditions and stipulations. There you go.
That's what I was doing, is reiterating your motion.
I know, thank you.
Any discussion on this?
Mayor, I think the Planning Commission did a nice job on this, making sure that all the variance criteria were met. It's all outlined here. I think it's a go.
Excellent. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. The next item on our agenda is to consider planning case 17-1, consider approval of Resolution 17-41, approving a lot split, 10334 Mississippi Boulevard by Parent Custom Homes. And the applicant is proposing to subdivide a little bit bigger lot, a 112,657 square foot lot into two parcels. The property has frontage on the Mississippi River. There is an existing residence with an attached garage and a detached garage that will be demolished. The existing driveway will remain and serve the new house on parcel A. The proposed lots meet the dimensional requirements of the LDR-1 zoning district, and each will have frontage on the river. Each lot is 100 feet wide and over 530 feet deep. Parcel A is 55,463 square feet, and Parcel B is 57,154 square feet. The minimum lot size is 15,000 square feet. The proposed house pads comply with all setback requirements, including from the ordinary high water and top of bluff. Since the existing residence is located over the proposed new lot line, the existing house and detached garage will have to be demolished prior to releasing the lot split for recording. Since park dedication was not provided when the lot was originally created, park dedication for the two lots will be required prior to releasing the lot split for recording. Park dedication for this lot split is $4,000 or $2,000 per lot. The engineering department's comments are attached. Coon Creek Watershed District permits will be required for the construction of each of the homes. At the Planning Commission meeting held on March 16, and one resident spoke at the public hearing, this individual did not have any opposition to the proposed lot split. The commission voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the proposed lot split. In fact, I watched that. The one resident that spoke just talked about how great the contractor did when he reconstructed Mississippi Boulevard.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler.
Well, I like the idea of being able to have more river lots in our city, so I'd like to make a motion in planning case 17-1 to approve Resolution 17-41, approving the lot split, with five following conditions. Compliance with Title 11 Land Development Regulations. All necessary Coon Creek Watershed District permits are obtained prior to releasing building permits. Existing house and garage be demolished prior to releasing the lot split for recording. All engineering comments be addressed, and the park dedication in the amount of $4,000 be paid.
I'll second that.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries.
Do we have one nice lot?
We got two.
We're good, thank you. I'm going outside.
I just do say, living on the river is very nice. Great to have two instead of one.
All right. Now, item 7, consider introduction of an ordinance amending City Code 8-214 for recycling collection. I kind of anticipated we'd get a presentation from McCollin tonight. So what this appears to be doing is changing how waste haulers under city collection permits report curbside recycling, collect it from both residential and multi-unit properties in a different manner, or they're currently doing that. So we're looking, where did it go? So we're looking at changing the ordinance so it'll say, each licensed hauler who provides trash, recycling, organics, or yard waste services must provide the director with tonnage reports on the amount of trash, recycling, organics, and yard waste collected. That looks like the only change, and the rest was already there. The reports may be provided either monthly or quarterly, and this is from all the haulers, and we're just trying to get a little more information. And this is apparently something that they can deal with.
That's my understanding of these reports that they need to provide. Occasionally, we have some difficulty in getting those reports, and that's why we're asking it to be an ordinance change. I think we have some obligations to collect that data, and so, like I said, in some ways it's sort of a housekeeping measure. I think most of our haulers are already in compliance with this requirement, but in the event that perhaps they aren't in compliance, we'd like to have that at least as an ordinance.
Okay, all right. Well, this is just an introduction. So we are introducing the attached ordinance amending the City Code 8-214 Recycling Collection, and we will consider that introduced. Item 8.
Do we need a motion to introduce it?
No. No.
It's just kind of like a public notice.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll have a, this is, yeah, right. It's like a public notice. We've introduced this, and if anybody wants more information about it, they should reach out to staff or somebody on the council and find out what's going on.
Can I just make a comment then?
Sure.
I mean, looking at this first, I know that, you know, additional regulation and things like that have impact on our businesses, so I reached out to some representatives to these trash haulers. And although there is some time and resources necessary to get this kind of stuff reported to them, they're all very fully supportive of it. I want to make sure that they're doing the right thing so our city can move along on this, so in that respect, I would support it as well.
Good. Thank you. All right. Item 8, consider agreement with the city of Andover for reconstruction of 133rd Avenue, Project 17-4. This is the 133rd Avenue between Crooked Lake Boulevard and Gladiola Street is a border street between the city of Andover and the city of Coon Rapids. The street segment was rated in poor condition by the Coon Rapids Engineering Staff in 2016. Staff at both cities coordinated and agreed on the roadway condition, and it was proposed to include this street for reconstruction as part of City of Coon Rapids Project 17-4. On February 21, 2017, the councils of Andover and Coon Rapids held public hearings and approved the reconstruction of this roadway, and it was agreed between the two cities that the costs for the reconstruction of this roadway segment should be shared equally. The construction costs are estimated at $75,000. Further, it was agreed that the city of Andover would pay engineering and administration costs to the city of Coon Rapids in the amount of 20% based on the final construction costs. The city of Andover City Council approved this agreement at its regular meeting dated March 21, and the roadway shall be constructed as part of Coon Rapids Project 17-4, with construction taking place between May and September 2017. Your honor. Councilmember Demmer.
I just had one question, because I can't remember how this works when both cities are involved. We, in this case, assess our side of the road and they assess their side of the road, or there's no assessment in this one? How does this one work?
Councilmember Demmer, that's the reason why we went to this agreement. Andover will assess their standard rates. They're just agreeing to pay 50% of the cost. So as opposed to us doing the assessments and getting complicated, we just said, you handle. So they did their own public hearing, they did their own assessment hearings, they did all of that on their end. This is just an agreement between the cities. They'll pay us directly and then assess their results.
So they're responsible for half, we're responsible for half. How they get their half is their business. Out of curiosity, if the two neighbors on the opposite cities talk to each other, do you know which neighbor's going to be paying less?
Coon Rapids.
That's what I thought. So on the Coon Rapids side, don't hold it over your neighbor.
It would simplify things if we just annexed Andover up to Bunker Lake Boulevard, right? Just, you know, oh, no, never mind, anyway.
So, oh wait, no, this one.
Was that a motion?
Not the annexing. All right. I would like to move that council approved the agreement for reconstruction of 133rd Avenue between Crooked Lake Boulevard and Gladiola Street, that agreement with Andover.
I second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Kicker. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 9, consider proposal and letter of engagement for sanitary sewer comprehensive plan update. Mr. Hammer, you want to just kind of hit the highlights on this one?
Certainly. Mr. Mayor, council, every 10 years, the city looks to, or is required to update its plan, its long-range planning for treatment facilities and such. So the last time our comprehensive, just our city comprehensive sewer plan was done was 2006. We had lots of development proposals coming in last year. We knew the 2018 citywide comp plan was on the horizon, so we delayed. And unfortunately, I didn't include it in the budget for 2017 for these costs. So with 2018 citywide comp plan coming due, and we're already overdue on this one, what we did is combine the two into one scope where they would prepare our 10-year plan as well as then take that information and integrate it into our 2018 comprehensive plan. I can stand for questions beyond that.
Council, any questions? Is there a motion percolating anywhere?
So I'll make a motion to authorize Resolution 17-43 amending the 2017 sewer budget, fund budget, and authorizing the execution of the letter of engagement with SEH in accordance with the proposed date, proposal dated March 10.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer. Discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Grischoviac.
Mr. Hammer mentioned that this wasn't in the budget for this year, but just to clarify, the funds are in the dedicated sewer fund, and they're there for this type of purpose, correct?
That's correct, Councilmember Grischoviac. They're, the funds are available, I just didn't include it in our 2017 budget.
Okay, that was the only question I had.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And it's the Mr. Hammer Show. Consider adoption of city goose management plan. We're on the edge of our seats.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item was before you in work session last fall. We kind of talked about the general parameters and why it's required. It's required by the DNR on an annual basis for us to have removal options available to us. So this is not a kill-the-geese plan, this is not get-rid-of-the-geese plan, this is just a way to manage them in the urban area. Based upon your direction at that time, you said keep it flexible for us. We went out for public comment, as is required. It was available on the website, we had an open house, so we received about a dozen comments or so. That was brought back to you in work session here just a week ago. We talked about the plan itself, we're continuing to work on the policy and how it's implemented, but the final plan is attached to this. I believe it's still on the website, although it may be the draft plan, and we'll get that updated. But it's for your consideration. If approved, it will be sent on to the DNR, and we will be in good standing with regard to goose management. I'll get back to you with that policy-type discussion in the not-too-distant future, and we will start working with some of the private property owners and having discussions with them about what this plan means and handle any other questions that come our way. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
Questions, anyone?
The only thing, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just ask Mr. Hammer, this actually is something that's required by the state, right, for us to participate in?
If we want to keep open the option to remove geese, it is required.
Okay. And would it be fair to say that our city's not uncommon that we do from time to time have a problem with the geese populations in town?
Yeah, Councilmember Johnson, this is metro-wide, statewide. So it's not unique to Coon Rapids.
And it's part of our obligation, like it is for like the Coon Creek Watershed District or the Conservation District, to deal with this problem because it really does impact water quality and also livability standards in the city.
Yes, it's health and human issues as well as water quality, and that's kind of where you told me that's where your focus should be.
Yep, very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're still holding out for a motion here.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to recommend the approval of the city goose management plan.
And I'll second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's passed. All right. Item 11 on our agenda is to consider Resolution 17-47, supporting condominium townhouse and cooperative construction. And this was kind of, the impetus for this was the Urban Land Institute requested the city consider adopting a resolution supporting legislation that seeks to encourage townhouse and condominium development by reducing litigation risks. These have been getting kind of submitted by cities for a little time now, and now basically our submission now would be just to kind of go into their folder, so when it's part of the omnibus bill, they can tell the legislators that we have X number of communities that have signed on in support of this legislation. Mr. Stemma, I'll go ahead.
Excuse me. Mayor and council, I will just sort of follow up with that, since this was a little bit of, this request came in late last week from ULI, and as the mayor mentioned, they're in support of it, and largely in part because they're trying to encourage owner-occupied construction of townhomes and condos and so forth. And they see that the litigation risk for developers is a barrier, or at least one barrier, to developing these sorts of projects. So what you tend to get, in theory then, is more rental units. And so this request came through. I did reach out today to both the League of Minnesota Cities and Metro Cities. The League of Cities does not have an official policy stance. On this topic, they're not against it. They have followed the legislation this, this year, which is now out of committee, has passed out of committee. They did make one minor modification to some of the language, just to clarify something. Metro Cities, on the other hand, is supporting this legislation more from the standpoint of encouraging housing options for communities such as Coon Rapids. So they're in support, the league itself doesn't have a formal policy position on it. And so I just wanted to let you know that I had reached out, and that's the information I received from them.
Thank you. I reached out to the Minnesota Association of Realtors, and they said that this is one of their 2017 Minnesota Home Ownership Initiative agenda items. So they are also advocating for this. And it seems like it's just sort of cleaning up some things that the current law, the homeowner association boards are allowed to pursue legal action on behalf of all members without, on behalf of all members without consent. And the proposed change is it would require a majority of homeowner association members to approve the decision to pursue legal action. The current law, the homeowner association board is not required to disclose information to all association members before taking legal action, and the proposed change would require complete disclosure to homeowner association members of any alleged defects, because you can see how that would impact all of them if the board takes upon some litigation initiative. The current law mediation is not required. The proposed changes require mediation as a cost-effective and preferred method of dispute resolution before legal action. And then the current law, recovery of attorney's fees in condo-townhome litigation is allowed, and proposed change would require all parties to pay their own attorney's fees. And then the current law, no requirement for maintenance plan, and the proposed change requires all homeowner associations to adopt and implement a preventive maintenance plan. So I don't know. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Johnson? Councilmember Johnson?
I have two primary concerns about this, and there are some other ancillary concerns. But the first is that this is a proposed modification of a law that's been in place since 1970. And it's before the legislature, and I can't discern from this any specific need that the city of Coon Rapids has faced, or problem that the city of Coon Rapids has faced that would cause us to do this, other than that the ULI has asked us to join in and give a resolution in support of it. And I think it's a lot more than just cleaning up a few things in it. It strips a board, a homeowner's association board, of the ability to bring litigation on behalf of the entire association without essentially putting it out to referendum to... on behalf of the entire association without essentially putting it out to referendum to the other members in, in the association. And of course, then you run into situations where there may be these proxy battles, because often a developer might own a significant number of units and be able to vote those, those shares, if you will, in the association by proxy. I think it's a, it's a worthy discussion to have at the legislative level. I just am concerned about that significant change in our city than blessing one side or the other with really an inability to have a full discussion about it here. And that's why I'm concerned about it, because we have a lot of other things before the legislature right now. Things like a bridge at Hanson, and I don't want to get anybody's noses out of joint because we're wading into this thing just because the ULI has asked us to do it. I think that I would urge constituents to contact their state legislators, their representatives in particular, because this is a House bill, and express their support or disagreement with the bill and work with them on it. I would urge the city here not to take a position with respect to it. That's all I'll say at this point in time, but I'd like to hear what other people's thoughts are, if they want to share them.
Anybody else? You got one? Councilmember Geisler?
Yeah. I had a few questions on, on this, this afternoon and prompted, I think, some of the other research. And, and to me, while I think that there may be some improvements that can be made to the, the old law, to me, I felt like, reading it, that this took a very strong swing in the opposite direction and, and really wasn't protecting the homeowners, but was really, and giving the, an unfair advantage to some builders. Not that they would necessarily take advantage of it, but it didn't protect the homeowners in my mind as much as I think it should. I'd like to see parts of what's in this resolution, but not all. And for that reason, I can't support us signing up for it.
Councilmember Demmer?
I'll actually pretty much echo that. You know, when I look through it, I think there's a couple of things that are slam dunks, but then I realize this is pretty far afield of my expertise. And without, it, it wouldn't make sense for us to have like a really involved, three-week-long conversation about whether or not our name goes on a letter with 50 other cities or not. And so, it wouldn't be the best use of our time to get the amount of knowledge I would feel I would need to really take a position on it. In the end, maybe I would totally support it, but I, you know, like I said, two of them look, just at first glance, great. The others look maybe a little more questionable. And, I don't know, I, it, it's always so hard because it'll, whether we do or don't will be so insignificant. You know, they'll have 50 cities, or they'll have 51 cities, or whatever it ends up being. I don't know. It's tough to just say, "Well, we, we looked at this this week and, and we think it's reasonable, so we're going to sign off." So, I guess I would either want to hold it a couple of weeks and have someone come in pro and con, discuss it with us if we feel it's that important, or just kind of let it go.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm not going to the mat on this. I mean, I, you know, when, when an organization that we're a part of asks us to support something that they feel is an important thing, I, I think it's just kind of showing a spirit of cooperation. And then, when we want them to drum up support for something that we want done, you know, there's a little quid pro quo. How do you say that, there, attorney?
Quid pro quo.
Yeah. But, you know, it's, it's, I think this, this one is like one click above what Councilmember Wells likes to call a symbolic resolution. They would demonstrate broad, it would demonstrate broad support to legislators, but at the same time, I'm not very far from where you're at either. If our note isn't in there, they're not going to go, "Hey, wait a minute. Coon Rapids isn't in here. I don't think I'm going to support this." You know, I don't, I don't think we carry that much weight. So, if, and this wasn't meant to be controversial, and if it is controversial, then I don't see any reason to, I, I, I don't see us putting this forward at a, at a four-three vote or something, because that doesn't really feel like we're offering our support either. And if that's kind of where we're at right now, I, I guess I don't even know that I would ask for a motion on this. Is that okay if we just move past, Mr. Brody? What would you like us to do?
I guess probably what I would, would suggest is exactly, that we table it indefinitely.
Ah, very good.
To make a motion to table it indefinitely. That way, it definitely does come around, we can remove it from the table.
I could take that motion.
Can I, can I throw something in real quick before we make that? Is there a discussion on tabling?
There is not a discussion on it, but there was no second yet, so go ahead.
I said it quickly. And, and just, just to be clear, you know, this is a group we belong to. They think it's a really high priority. I'm totally fine with at some point, if we get more education on it, taking it back off the table, if that's what the will of the council is. Maybe it's my own lack of homework during the week, but I, I just didn't feel like I was in the place where I would say, "This is great." So, again, not, not against it, just not for it yet. So, I, so I like the tabling idea. We could take it back off later, if so, if that made sense.
If you, if you watched any of the news out of the House today, the House of Representatives today, this just doesn't mean anything.
Right.
Everything's hitting the fan down there. So, was there a motion? Mr. Stemwell, sorry.
I was just going to mention, you know, typically, with something like this, we do have a little more lead time, but given, I think we got the request on Thursday afternoon.
The mayor may not have been the first, and they sent it to me, though.
Oh, okay. So, typically, you know, these are things we try to work session, or we talk about during our legislative priorities. Obviously, things change throughout a session, things come up and go. We do get a lot of requests for city calls or support or resolutions. Some of them, you know, just don't make sense. But this one was pretty specific, so we thought it was at least worth the dialogue, and obviously it's going to go a particular direction. So, I just wanted to clarify if I can apologize.
Sure. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you. Because I think probably the best place for the debate on this is at the legislature, I would make a motion to table this matter.
Second. Motion and a second to table, no further discussion. And we'll move on to open mic, I guess. We good with that?
We think we want to vote.
We have to vote on that? Really?
Yep.
All in favor of tabling, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We unanimously voted to table it. And pretty sure there's nobody here for open mic unless somebody from...
Staff.
Staff wants to come.
Do the crowd shots.
Pulled in, and that parking lot was packed, and I thought, "Uh-oh." Apparently, they're not here for us.
No, there's a college thing going on at the Civic Center.
All right. So, item number 12 then is reports on previous, reports on previous open mic. At the April 4th, April 4th meeting? No, that's today. The last meeting of March, Mr. John Holland addressed counsel regarding litter and trash throughout the city. Mr. Holland asked the council to consider cleaning up and beautifying the community. Mr. Holland not only raised concerns regarding trash littering the city, but provided several suggestions for possible solutions that staff will be looking into. If residents see trash or other maintenance-related items needing attention, it can be reported by calling 763-767-6470. City staff will then direct the complaint to the correct personnel to investigate. And there is also, and this is really the way to go, there is also a report-it feature on the city's website, which can be accessed, accessed on the homepage by clicking on the report-it button. And the city's website is www.coonrapidsmn.gov, and a copy of this memo is or will be sent to Mr. Holland, and staff recommends no further action at this time, other than we are looking into those items that be suggested, which were great suggestions. And we are up to other business.
Enjoy the, enjoy the nice weather.
There must be something going on. Mr. Stemwell?
I'll just plant the seed a little early. We've got the Green Exco opening up on April 22nd.
9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the National Sports Center, just across University there. And then, there was one other thing. I'll just mention the Dessert and Coffee Concert Series. It's a backyard band, this Thursday, April 6th, from 7:00 to 10:00 PM here at the Coon Rapids, Coon Rapids Civic Center.
Excellent. Excellent. So, Mr. Hammer, is there any chance that they could like powder, we could buy powder-coated signal arms or something? Going down University Avenue, you look up at those, the signal arms, which are 20 feet in the air. I don't know how they're rusted out. They, they can't be getting road salt up there. They just look junky, and you're, and then I was, and then I was crossing 65 today from, from six, from Highway 10, which obviously is Blaine and Mendat. But the, 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 the signal arms are all rusted out over, over your head. How does that happen? You know?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it is salt. I mean, you get that road spray, especially on those high speeds. We experience, I mean, if you just think of Foley, Main, University, those corridors, and the deterioration of those compared to some of our more local streets, they, plus they also have the bare pavement policy, so they're applying more chemical as well, which is why some of our streetlights don't last as long in those environments as well.
That's rusting out the base, though. The spray goes way over the head like that, huh?
When you're driving a plow truck at 60 miles an hour and you're throwing...
45, 45, University.
65.
All right. Thank you. I was just wondering about that. All right. Any other business to have for council this evening?
I just wanted to make a note, we made, Mr. Mayor and council, we made a couple of appointments to the planning, to the commissions, and I just wanted to say that we had some really good candidates for those, those posts, and it's important for our community that people step up into those. And you can find more information on our website about those commissions. Just wanted to thank those individuals.
All right. Business? You know, we should do a adjourn somewhere?
Oh.
Councilmember Johnson?
What's going on at Bunker?
Oh, thank you for asking.
I just said, I just said something about how beautiful the weather has been, so I hope you're getting lots of activity out.